The city of Fergus Falls City Council, it's March 29th and we'll call this meeting to order. Roll call please.
Joe.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item this morning is the Gate City Bank Neighborhood Improvement Program Presentation. We have our friends from Gate City Banks, we'll welcome them this morning.
Good morning, my name is Brett Delage. I'm the Retail Manager with Gate City Bank. A cornerstone of Gate City Bank's mission is to serve our customers and communities by creating a better way of life. Today I'll discuss how the Neighborhood Impact Program offered by Gate City Bank does just that. The Neighborhood Impact Program is a series of programs designed to work together to improve neighborhood quality of life and encourage investment in the city's existing neighborhoods. Since 2003, Gate City Bank is proud to have been involved in this program throughout various communities across North Dakota and Central Minnesota. Gate City Bank's investment in the program has made significant impact on the city's efforts to maintain affordable housing and keep neighborhoods fresh. The City of Fergus Falls Neighborhood Impact Program was established for local homeowners to encourage the preservation of homes, add to the long-term value of life to the property and neighborhood. We are extremely grateful to continue and renew this relationship with Fergus Falls for the Neighborhood Impact Program. Brian had handed out some sheets for you guys to review for just various guidelines. And I will throw it to Brian here, he is our personal loan officer.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for your time. Yes, Gate City Bank, we have several products, this one is definitely one of my favorites. We, we have an ever-flowing product, this Neighborhood Impact Improvement Program. For example, 2020, the cap on this program was 75,000. We know that things change in our environment, things are more expensive. We've updated that to the max of 100,000. So we know that things can change and this program changes with it. So thank you again for allowing us to allow, to continue this program with Fergus Falls. Should there be any questions on the product, please reach me at Gate City Bank.
Thank you, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And maybe after the meeting, we can present the check, you want to present the check now?
Yes, I would.
I'm kind of under strict orders not to go down there very much, but when you got a check for a million dollars, I'll come down.
One person I can think of.
That pretty slide showing in the background, make it look like spring.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna skip by number two for now, because I think Ms. Lundine is gonna join us for that conversation. So we will go to our Chief of Public Safety, Kyle Bergen, good morning Kyle.
Good morning Mayor, good morning Council. I appreciate the time this morning. I'm gonna talk about two of the items together, I'll ask for the resolution separately, but the Community Service Officer and the Tuition Reimbursement Program really kind of go hand in hand. And they're a recruitment tool for us. You know, when I started on the Police Department back in 95, there's probably 250 to 300 applicants for, I think at that time, three openings. You know, the last time, we advertised a position last fall, we had zero. And we're not alone. Agencies across, not only Minnesota, but really across the nation are having that same problem. We have been changing the way that we go out and recruit. We've been doing a lot more active recruiting at colleges and universities. And we're learning things along the way. And, and one of the things is that we have to capture people a lot earlier in their educational process in order to recruit them to our organization. And the other thing I think that we're seeing is, for lack of a better phrase, we have to start looking at more of a homegrown workforce. And, and this Community Service Officer Program allows us to do that. When we were out recruiting, we found four individuals, they still have about a year and a half left of schooling. But they all are either from Fergus Falls or live within about a 20-mile radius of Fergus Falls. So this is, you know, an ideal program for them, gives them an opportunity to work for our organization. Gives us a chance, so it allows them to see what, what the community is like, what the agency is like. It also allows us the opportunity to kind of take a look at them in a non-traditional way, instead of just a, an application or an interview. So those four positions that we're asking for, I think is gonna help us achieve some, some really good recruits. The second part of it is, is the tuition reimbursement. So currently, the city's policy applies to full-time employees. We've, we've been kind of working through this. And, and really the reimbursement part is almost like, kind of like the GI Bill. So if you, you know, sign on with our organization, you give us two years, you know, we're gonna give you maybe $2,000 to help pay for your educational costs. If you give us four years, you know, it's up to $5,000. So we want to help them, we want to attract them to our organization. And, and by signing that commitment, I think once they, you know, become members of our agency, see what the community and the agency have to offer, we're hoping that they have buy-in and that we're, you know, keeping these people long-term. So that's the essence of those two programs in a nutshell. So the first resolution in front of you is for the hiring of up to four CSOs. You know, I'm estimating a cost of about $20,000 for that. We currently have an open position, we have another retirement that's occurring this year as well. So just through attrition, we're gonna have more than enough money to cover this cost that wasn't in our budget. So that's what I'm asking for in the first resolution, is authorization to hire those CSOs.
Thanks Chief.
I will offer that, Your Honor.
Second up, question I have, Chief, have you seen this, something obviously a logical, great plan to get from the community? I mean, that's what I think makes our force successful in engaging with the community. Have other communities looked at similar approaches?
Sure, a lot of, you know, down in the metro, obviously they have, you know, financially far more resources than we do as, as a smaller community. So this program or similar programs are in play down in the metro, in a lot, a lot of the suburban departments. You know, I worked from, in St. Paul, you know, even back in the 90s, they had, you know, programs similar to this. It was more towards, you know, maybe like, you'd be hired as a parking enforcement officer or a park ranger employed with the city of St. Paul and then eventually move your way into a, a police officer position. So nothing new that way, but for an agency our size and in greater Minnesota, it's, it's, it's a little bit more challenging for us. But I think now is the time to really embrace this opportunity, so.
Thanks Chief, anyone else have any questions?
I just like the idea of getting, recruiting the people from our area, you know, back 40 years ago or 45, when I was a youngster. We had a lot of officers that were from Fergus, that were just, but the training, the course isn't there like it used to be. But, I mean, it is now like it before, but it's just, it was a great thing to have somebody that you kind of recognized. And of course, it was a better, easier feel for the people, I think, to find somebody locally.
Yeah, no, I think right now about 25% of our officers, you know, grew up in town. Another 25% are like me, were, were maybe an hour from, from Fergus. But I would say, you know, probably 80% of the officers come from communities of our size or smaller. You know, we, and we have people from as far as Albert Lee and, and the Cloquet area. But I think to Scott's point, people that kind of grew up in a, in a smaller community and have those same community values are really a good fit for us. And I can't say enough good things about the staff that we have.
I agree 100%, it's a great thing.
All right, we've got a motion in a second to bring this to the council on Monday night. If I'm favor that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. All right, Chief, you got also the tuition reimbursement program.
Yep, so the second action is for a resolution supporting what we're calling the Pathways to Policing Program and the amendments to the, the tuition reimbursement policy of the city. So again, just looking for a recommendation for that.
To the council, we can do that through a motion this morning? Make a motion. Thank you Al, thank you Scott. Any further questions for Chief Bergen? All in favor of that motion, say aye. Both same sign, that motion carries as well. And a couple more from Chief Bergen, Public Safety Officer Wellness Plan and Policy.
Thanks Mayor. So there's been a lot of discussion in the last few years about officer wellness, both in the police and the fire service. A lot of the programs in our, in our wellness plan have been around for 30 years or more. We've had Employees Assistance Program for decades. We've had, you know, crisis debriefings, professional services through psychologists. We've had fitness program in, in different forms over the years. But in the last couple of years, the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, they provide our liability insurance. They provide our workers' comp insurance. They've really been pushing cities to come up with a comprehensive policy. So a lot of what's in there is, is nothing new. We just had to put it together in a, in a formalized wellness policy. There are a few things that are new and I'll just point those out quickly. One is our, our wellness leave. When we initiated this program back in, or this policy back in 2021, originally called that a sabbatical program. If you get the League of Minnesota Cities Magazine, there's an article in there, this issue about the City of Painesville, Minnesota, being one of the first to implement a program like, like that. And really, we're not giving our staff anything else, anything more than other employees of the city are receiving as far as time. It's just that we're recognizing that the type of stress and issues that police officers face is a little bit different and we have to allow them to use that time in, in a different manner. And then the, and then the last thing that's maybe a little bit newer is in the last page of the policy, has to do with mindfulness. And just a lot of, you know, good research out there recently. And again, a lot of these things aren't anything new. You know, mindfulness, spirituality, could be anything, meditation, you know, participation in, you know, different religious programs. Have to be a little bit careful being a government entity with that. But I think everybody understands the whole concept of, you have to have a connection, you know, spiritually in some form or another. So again, there's nothing too new about this program. There's a lot of legislation that's going through both the House and the Senate at this time pertaining to this type of information. And I think it's just best that we get council to recognize and approve this policy. And then also to allow me to change this policy, because, you know, I, I think a lot of times department policies are living documents. They constantly have to be evolved. But there's some mandates that have happened in the last couple of years. And I just think it's important, maybe now that we bring it before the council and get your stamp of approval on it as well as we continue to move forward on this process. So that's all I'm asking for is a resolution approving the wellness policy.
Thanks Chief, we can recommend that to the council on Monday night, thanks Scott.
I'll offer that.
Thank you Scott.
I'll second.
Thanks Jim, any questions? Chief Bergen, all in favor of that motion, say aye. Both same sign, carries, one last one.
Promise this will make this one, this is the easiest one.
Bergen showed it.
Yeah. Probably more than anybody has to put up with, let me tell you. So this, we're just declaring surplus property, three vehicles there that, that's just part of our normal rotation to rotate out our squad cars and get new squad cars. And then the only addition is, we have some miscellaneous office chairs that we'll be putting up for sale on some kind of public forum. So just looking at a resolution declaring the following items as surplus.
I'll offer that, Your Honor, then I have a question for the Chief.
Yeah, thank you, yes.
Chief, have you, have you looked at all into, in the future, replacing some vehicles with electric vehicles?
We, we have, so there's a lot of, there's a lot going on right now, of course, with electric vehicles. And a lot of that is, you know, being pushed by, you know, I think California was probably one of the bigger impetuses for moving to electric. And I think Ford, when it comes to traditional police vehicles, Ford has come out with a hybrid police utility vehicle, didn't, wasn't real successful, and I think that they have discontinued that. But they're also looking at the Ford pickup, the F-150, they offer that in a police package. But the electric version of that is not currently offered. So I think it's just a matter of time. So a lot of the, the electric vehicles that you'd buy on the civilian market, they're just not built currently to, you know, be able to take all the things and the hardships that police vehicles typically go under. So a lot of places have tried them, they haven't had a lot of successes. But I do think that that's going to naturally be the, the future for our vehicles. It's just, what we're seeing is it's not here quite yet. But I think within the next few years, we, we will see either some type of a hybrid vehicle or an all-electric vehicle just as the market.
I've seen, I've read articles from, you know, various departments across the country that have purchased, for instance, Teslas. And, you know, and, and have been quite happy with them.
Yeah, I think, you know, some of the articles that I've read, if you get into southern states, they're probably a little bit, the reviews are a little bit better. I know that there was one agency in Minnesota that had a Tesla. And again, I don't think it quite hit the, the marks that they were, they were hoping for. But like I said, I think it's just technology advances and there's just a lot that goes into, like I know it looks like a Ford Explorer, but they changed the suspension in the vehicles for policing. You know, transmissions, engines, so there's a lot of different components that are changed out between a police vehicle and a civilian market vehicle. But, you know, we've looked at other vehicles in the past and, you know, that's something that maybe we can look at as, you know, more for like our investigative or administrative vehicles, is, is maybe trying them there. But for our regular squads, I think eventually we'll get there. But I think the automakers gotta work out some bugs too, for the police market.
Yeah, yeah, I would just encourage you to, you know, pursue those opportunities. And we can, we can put locally produced solar power into them, so that's kind of nice.
Yep.
But yeah, thanks, appreciate it.
You bet.
Jim. Do they get enough speed out of an electric vehicle for like, like a chase?
Oh yeah, they're very fast.
Oh yeah.
An electric vehicle accelerates, a gas combustion engine can't even compete with it. Because it's just an instant speed. So the only problem is, I would say it's range. The faster you go, the quicker you're depleting battery.
Yeah, Jim, well, warmer weather though, you're talking about down south, warmer weather is gonna be much better for these vehicles than the cold weather up here.
Yeah.
And I went to work this morning and I went in the freezer to warm up.
Yeah. Yeah, Mother Nature certainly hasn't been kind to us.
Yeah, after my private testing on a closed track, I can tell you that Tesla will catch anything out there.
Yeah, they're definitely supposed to be.
Thanks Chief, so we have a motion to bring the surplus vehicles to the council on Monday night. We have the motion, second again, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that motion carries, thanks Chief.
Thanks Chief.
Next item up for discussion is the surface water assessment. We'll call on our Public Works Director, Guy Taylor. Morning Guy.
Good morning, thank you Your Honor. Arguably, the two most important things that we do for the city is provide safe, quality drinking water. And then we get rid of that water. So our intake at the east end of the city, at the Wright Lake Water Plant, is managed by Chad Lindgren back here. He, along with his staff, they do a great job providing us that great water. And this morning, we're gonna go through a, an assessment that was done by a partnership with the Minnesota Department of Health and Braun Intertech. We have our local partner here from the Department of Health Office, Dan Disrude. He's gonna go through the surface water assessment. And he'll just give you an idea of what we do, what our catch area is for surface water that comes into Hoot Lake, Wright Lake, and then into our plant, and what we need to do to protect that.
Thanks Guy.
Thank you.
Morning, you're welcome.
Thank you. Let's give it a try here. Okay. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Dan Disrude, I'm a source water protection planner. I'm assigned to the, what my boss has called the Northwest District, so Otterdale, Coney, and 17 other counties up kind of in the northwest corner of the state. So again, in 2003, it's not gonna work here. Okay. Sure, okay, thanks. So in 2003, Minnesota Department of Health prepared a report that kind of demonstrated where Fergus Falls drinking water quality, where the water comes from, priority areas for protection, and potential sources of contamination. In 2017, go ahead, money and work was appropriated by the legislature for MDH to do updates. So Source Water Assessment Update is intended to set the stage for developing what is called a SWIP, Source Water, Surface Water Intake Protection Plan. So in 2021, as mentioned, Minnesota Department of Health contracted with Braun Intertech, which was kind of new for us to work with a contractor to develop the scientific work in developing that source water assessment. And 2022 invitations went out to identified partners for a series of meetings that were held via Teams at that time to exchange information needed to determine where your water comes from, the water quality information, and identify those priority areas. And again, participants were the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, the DNR, Department of Agriculture, your local soil and water conservation districts, Bowser, and obviously the city. Go ahead. So what we came up with is four delineated areas. The source water assessment area is typically, if you're used to those watershed subunits, it would be a Huck 8. And anything upstream of Wright Lake intake would be considered that source water assessment area. Which was really good as far as the timing with the one watershed, one plan development that was going on at that time. So the partners were already engaged with that. And, and again, we brought some of these concerns to those meetings. Go ahead. So besides the source water assessment area, there's three other nested areas that have been delineated. One has been the DWISMA, the Drinking Water Supply Management Area, which is, again, if you're looking at those watershed units, it would be the Huck 12 plus other considerations. And it really is focusing on the long-term health impacts of non-point pollution sources getting into your drinking water. So again, that, so that is depicted by the kind of the yellow area, that DWISMA. The blue area is what was delineated as the spill management area. Again, typically it's gonna be a 24-hour time of travel to your intake, plus some other considerations. And then you have the red area that is delineated as your emergency response area. That would be, again, typically an eight-hour time of travel to get to your intake, plus some other considerations. Go ahead. So the city is effectively treating the water to keep it safe for human consumption. You know, there's some seasonal and incident impacts that, to the water quality that Chad is monitoring all the time and, and impacts those treatment needs. Again, land use varies in the area that we're, have delineated as where your water is coming from, from, you know, urban development to cultivated crops to forested areas. And each uniquely impacts the water quality. So again, a potential contaminant source inventory was developed, kind of organized, whether it was a point source contamination concern versus a non-point contamination source. Point source would be those known contaminated lands, things that, you know, maybe a failing septic system. Non-point being just kind of, you know, again, fertilizer use and, you know, maybe even your parks if there was some herbicides or pesticides that are, are used. We also are, you know, again, kind of charged to take a look at those erratic weather patterns and how that's gonna be impacting, what to anticipate for the future. So again, the high priority obviously was that, that, that blue and the red area, that spill management area, the emergency response area, really looking at the chemical releases, taking a look at, you know, bridge, road, and railroad crossings over the rivers as far as, you know, what could happen, kind of like the, the Delaware River and what Philadelphia is kind of dealing with. So kind of looking at some of the needs as far as urban planning, encouraging best management practices as far as erosion and fertilizer use. Go ahead. So in care of the point source and non-point source contamination monitoring needs will continue. It's kind of described in the assessment. The need for spill prevention and developing emergency plans is described in that assessment. Stormwater outlets to Hoot Lake and Wright Lake, and where they drain to, you know, and kind of looking at, you know, outreach to the residents that are around there as far as kind of the, being good stewards and, and knowing what's going down their drain. Take a look at the needs as far as how the city is gonna respond to maybe a large fuel spill. Take a look at landings, you know, kind of what, what kind of threat that that might be as far as if people are fueling boats at the landing. And we understand that, you know, the city has a three to four-day storage as well as, again, the option of using the well for emergency type situations. But really, what we're hoping for is the city to take action as far as to accept the, the assessment. Kind of give the thumbs up for us to take the next steps in developing that SWIP, that Surface Source Water Protection Intake Protection Plan. Fergus Falls, again, in a very good position compared to some of the other surface water users as far as there's a lot of buffer. natural protections that are in place. Great relationship with Otter Tail Power as far as the controls of the dams and and work with them. Go ahead. The source water assessment, again, like I said, really is used for information to continue on that intake protection plan. And in that intake protection plan, we'll be looking to identify and prioritize activities that are reasonable for the city to protect the drinking water source. Again, most of those areas that have been delineated, as you saw, outside the city's jurisdiction, football partnerships, describing how local partners can help. And again, examine if, you know, anticipated changes that are expected for the community, what can be anticipated as far as the change in in issues and needs related to the water supply. Go ahead. So again, we're going to expand on the priority issues identified in the source water assessment. In the SWIP, we're going to develop a goal statement that will be supported by identified implementation activities, which we call management strategies, which are typically, you know, a lot of outreach, additional data collection. Again, those potential contaminant source. Again, controls, land use issues that are related to that. And again, encouraging a lot of BMPs related to some of the feedlots or whatever else is found out there. So again, besides the Minnesota Department of Health, again, if we develop that intake protection plan, it makes you eligible for Minnesota Department of Health's implementation and competitive grants. But really, the the biggest bang for the buck is when if this is approved, some of those are partners that have been identified. They will be able to use the plan to justify other larger Bowser type grants that are out there that will have multiple benefits, but again, benefiting the community of Fergus Falls and their drinking water supply. Go ahead. Yeah, I think Danielle and Derek, the intention was that they're going to join us here through Teams virtually. They are in St. Paul. Most my work in the Northwest area is, you know, continue to be working with you as far as your well and protection plan. But most of your neighbors, it's it's groundwater that they're using. I will be your point of contact for the development of that SWIP that we described. But Derek and Danielle, they they are the two people when we talk about the legislature appropriating money. They're dedicated to source water or surface water sources, which makes your community unique. And they wanted to be here today to answer any questions. They will continue to be resources because they'll be specialized and really know how your plan compares to others. But that's your team there. So I will hold for any questions, obviously work through Guy and Chad, and and they'll continue to be there for you.
Yeah, thanks for being here, Dan. And Guy, you mentioned it. Chad, thank you, you and your team. There's a lot of, I think, a lot of employees within the Public Works Department that work hard every day, that provide the services that we probably sometimes take for granted. So thanks, Guy and Chad, for your work.
Thank you, your honor. So yes, just looking for a resolution to accept the source water assessment. And then we will come back to you when we're to the point of doing the SWIP and identify funding sources and move forward in that.
Thanks. So we can have a motion to bring this to the council on Monday night for approval? The assessment?
All of that.
Thanks, Tom.
I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah, thanks, Scott. Go ahead, please.
In the agencies that were mentioned, as far as who you've worked with, with the Minnesota Department of Health, you didn't mention Otter Tail County. But in other counties, there would be neighboring too. So as long as we're talking about the other agencies that would be included, wouldn't it be prudent to include those counties as well?
Yes, absolutely. Again, mentioned, you know, yes, the Soil and Water Conservation Districts are, you know, kind of their own entity. But again, Otter Tail Land Management has, like previously mentioned, with the one watershed, one plan, fully engaged with it. I think when we had those teams meetings, they dial in early, but they did rely on the SWCDs for providing most of that technical expertise. But they they were included as far as review. And I don't know, Guy, if you had any more to expand on that.
No, they, yeah, for sure, they've been included all along.
And then one other, just a detail on the document that we got, it would be page twenty-three of the source water assessment. There's a paragraph referring to, you know, the increases in temperature and how things have been tracking over time. And the last statement in this paragraph reads, "These higher temperatures will drive increased evaporation rates and could lead to less flow available for supply. There will always be variability in weather, but over time, the increases in precipitation, PDSI, low and high temperatures will continue." And I think that's an assumption that we can't make. If it may continue or will likely continue, if you want to give it that kind of a subjective statement, I would I would go with that. But to just assume that temperatures will continue. Three months ago, nobody thought we'd break up to below zero temperatures on March twenty-ninth. And I don't think we can say that that's going to be the case forever. So as this is a draft, I would suggest that that be revised. And then the last statement, I guess, is as we look at surface water, obviously, that's been our main source all these times. But as you look to what could happen and what might happen, as a city, we probably need to look at wells and what we're going to do to put another well in the ground or maybe more than one so that we've got the supply we need that's really dependable in the future, in case something happens on the surface. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Tom?
I will respectfully offer my counterpoint to council members. Kwame, first point, I think more than likely, we can plan on extreme weather events becoming more extreme with with the progression of climate change. And that that I would say that we should plan for the worst. And I always tell people, hey, if I'm wrong about climate change, boy, I hope so. But if I'm not, we are going to be up the creek. So I would I would just make the counterpoint to that, that I think it's something we really need to plan for.
Thanks, Tom. Any any other questions of Dan or Guy or Chad? Let's see, do we get the, we have a motion to bring this to the council? Okay, got it. Questions on favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Guy. Thanks, Chad. Andrew, do you have any other again items to come before the committee this morning?
We have to jump back up to number two, your honor.
Oh, that's right, we didn't, and we don't have our guest. But we'll turn it over for the Oak Grove Cemetery discussion. Andrew, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, your honor, council members. I was expecting a few friends here this morning, but certainly versed enough to be able to accomplish what we need to. Buzz Lundin, Steve Emerson, and Rod Berg have been very good partners. They are the ones that are in charge of Oak Grove Cemetery. And they've been meeting with city staff over the last several months about this expansion. I will also note Buzz has been very dedicated to this effort. Bill Sonmore, who's been with the city for almost thirty years, made a comment to me last week that Buzz has approached him every single year about this topic. So it doesn't fall off our radar and doesn't ever get lost in the shuffle of things that we do. But now the Oak Grove Cemetery has decided now is the time that they want to make the official request. It's been on our radar for almost thirty years. But what they're asking of the city is for us to gift them five acres of land. It's, as you can see on the map here on the screen, it's directly north of the existing cemetery. You can see some of the the headstones there at the bottom of that picture. This, the parcel boundaries are are kind of dictated by the fact that we have a water main running on the, it'd be west side or the left side of the map. You can't see it, there's a purple line if you're looking at your packet that that marks that water line, which we missed by the parcel boundary here. So this is what they're looking at doing. They had Anderson Land Surveying lay out what it could look like. It's about twelve hundred lots that there are lots, I guess, is that the right term? I don't know what the
Plot.
Plot. There you go.
Graves.
Graves. Twelve hundred people can be fit.
Well, they're going to live there for a while. Permanent real estate.
So excuse me for my my lack of correctness there. But anyway, the request is that the city would donate this property to them so they are covered for several years into the future for their expenditure, expansion of this space. This is the only non-denominational public cemetery that we have in the city. So ultimately, statutorily, it becomes the city's responsibility if the association doesn't exist. So it's good to keep them happy. It's good to be good partners. They've done a wonderful job maintaining that. They've been forward thinking and then looking into the future, as evidenced by the thirty year conversation around this. And if the council is ready to move forward, we can accomplish that by a resolution on Monday night. We'll get all the appropriate documents put together and go through the legal process of getting that ownership transferred.
Thank you, Andrew. And I know, like you said, I think Steve and Buzz and have talked to all of us, they've done a good job. They've obviously done their homework, they care passionately about this. So I'm thanks for your partnership with them to make this something for the entire community.
They're great to work with. I can't say that enough. They've been very respectful and and very good to work with.
Do we need a motion to put that on the consent agenda?
Please.
Well, it's not even me on this thing because I think they might want to be here.
Sure.
But anyway, we'll we'll put it on the agenda for for Monday night, Tom. Second, Jim, questions, comments?
I know that they're running out of lots. Some of those that they have down there now are pretty wet. So cremations can go in there, I understand, but but to bury a person and get the depth that it's awful wet.
I'd just like to make a comment too, if I may, Mr. Mayor. You know, I've been back in town, I think it's been twenty-seven, twenty-eight years, twenty-nine, whatever it is. And this has been talked about then. And I will say that Oak Grove Cemetery is a historical place. You know, and we were talking, Tom, when you had brought it up about the Dell family and you had something from that family. And I said, I know where he's at. He's at Oak Grove Cemetery. And this is history that I think can carry on. As far as Buzz and Rod, I've worked with them for many years. Fabulous people. They care about the community. They want this to continue on. And what I see is some great foresight here is that they don't need it right at this moment, but they're planning ahead. And I think that's great thinking. And I would really support this.
Thanks, Al. Scott.
You may be able to answer this, hopefully you can. But in the conversations that I had with Steve Emerson in particular, he mentioned a land swap that apparently had been part of this deal and where this may have started some time ago. Maybe you could elaborate on that a bit.
I can. If can somebody pull up a, can you pull up a map? Guy, could you? Yes. So there's a parcel of land right along the river that is owned by Oak Grove Cemetery. It's lowland, it's swampy land, it's no value to them or to the city. And so to get creative, they mentioned, you know, they'd be willing to do a land swap. That's an option. We don't have any use or need or or value for that property. And then one of the reasons why we were hesitant to to go in that direction is because if there's ever a time where there's a road improvement project or trees that need to be removed, we're talking about cost or assessments. All of a sudden, the city bears more of that cost rather than if it's in somebody else's ownership. And they understood that there was no value to us in that land, just as there's no value to them in that land. But we can certainly take it on if we want to. But that was the rationale is we can accomplish this just by donating it rather than doing the land swap. And there's really no value to the city and the land that they had proposed that they take on. So just to be pretty blunt about that, it's it's marshy, lowland that's, I don't know if you could walk out there, quite frankly.
When it was mentioned, I was under the impression that that was the deal. And apparently, if there's a way that we can do this without that being a part of the deal, that's fine. I just I didn't realize.
That was the initial proposal. And as we talked through that and and as we learned that it'd probably be more burdensome than favorable for the city to take on the other land, it was in our best interest to just give it to them or gift it to them without the land swap. So guys, get close here. Yeah, that's the parcel there. So for reference, this is, if it turns into Main Street, but it's Mount Faith Avenue, Mount Faith. This is the, this line here is the road. No, this is the one in City Shop. This is the launch, the potato launch. It's called the rock in this area. So this parcel here, you can see it's all small. A few trees along the perimeter, a couple lines, it's very wet.
I don't think we want that land, right?
I don't think we have any use for it. I, if any staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's no value to us.
The only thing I would see with it is there's trees on it that at some point are going to have to be dealt with. So it's going to end up costing us money. And in the end, we helped them out with a lot of their tree removals anyway. So there's no benefit to the city owning it.
But if anybody feels strongly about it, that offer's on the table.
Any other questions? Thanks, Scott. We have a motion and a second to bring this to the council. On favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Thank you, Andrew. And yeah, again, thank you to Buzz, Steve, and Rod for the partnership on this. It's all that we have to come before the council that I'm aware of. Lynn, do you have any announcements?
And then one, one comment, your honor. Councilmember Rufus asked to start a discussion on the topic of work hours for contractors on the weekends. And out of respect for the fact that we're springing that on you, we don't need to have that conversation today. But we'll put that on the next committee of the whole agenda, if that's fine. So in about two weeks, we'll have a discussion about potentially amending the ordinances related to work hours on Saturday. For reference, I think we don't allow contractors to start till nine AM on Saturday. And some some have asked whether we can move that earlier in the day so projects can get started and and use that day. So anyway, that's the discussion that'll be forthcoming. Just wanted to put that on your radar.
Yeah, thanks, Andrew. And with that, we will adjourn.